Six thirty.
It is six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. First thing on the agenda tonight is Chief Bentrew will do a swearing in ceremony for our police reserve officers.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce and welcome and swear in our reserve officers. Our ordinance does require that we do swear in our reserve volunteer officers. And unfortunately with COVID and not meeting and all of those things, we weren't able to do it until now. But I just want to, and I'll call them up by name shortly. We had about sixty seconds to kind of rehearse this, so if it's okay, I'm just gonna have them actually come up and face the audience, so their backs will be to you. If you'd like to move off to the side, you're welcome to do that. But I want to recognize our reserve officers, first of all, for their help this past summer at the ledge. They did a great job, and their volunteer support was very much appreciated. We did our best to try to prepare them and to train them, but in a sense, with the traffic control plan, and we spent a lot of time developing that as well, when it came to the actual deployment, we kind of threw them in the deep end of the pool. And they learned how to swim pretty quickly, and they did a tremendous job. So just want to thank them for that effort. We are going to continue to train this winter. And I'll just, maybe if I could put a little commercial out there, we are looking to grow our reserve officer program. You do not have to be a Wade Park resident to be a member of our reserve program. And so if there's members of the public that are interested, please reach out and contact me. We'd like to talk to you about the opportunity. So anyway, with that, I'd like to call up by name our reserve officers in alphabetical order. First is Eric Bull. Shawn Hamilton could not be here tonight. We will take care of his swearing in later. Cody Kunchenberg, sorry if I messed up your name. David Miller. Alex, or Alan Kohenske could not make it here tonight. We will do that during a training time. Jim Staska. Randy Thiel. And David Voit. So I'd ask each of you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of reserve officer within and for the Wade Park Police Department and the city of Wade Park. If so, signify by saying I will. There's an additional written statement I'm just gonna read for reasons of brevity. That I will work in partnership with the public of the city of Wade Park toward providing a safe environment, enhancing the quality of life consistent with the values of our community. That I will hear to the ethical values of professionalism, integrity, responsiveness, sensitivity, respect, and openness. And that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will fully and faithfully discharge the duties of reserve officer on which I am about to enter. And there is a place for you to sign. We'll maybe have you take care of that over next door in the upper conference room. But again, thank you very much for your willingness to serve the city. And it's an honor to work with you all. So we've got some cake for you next door in the upper conference room. And I'd like to, you know, if the council doesn't go too long, there'll be some cake for you afterwards, for the members of the council, as well as staff, if you're able to stop over.
Thanks for the incentive.
Thanks for coming in. Yeah, thank you.
All right, is there anyone here for public input?
Good evening, council. This is Gary Zimmerman from 224 Third Street South, Wade Park. I'm here today, this annual thing that I have done in years past, about the crosswalk, the following areas need to be taken a look at. Over by my place at Third Street South, both directions and Second Street South needs to be redone. Over by Park Meadows, going into Park Meadows, Second Street South, that needs to be redone. And Dunn Woody Lane, Second Street South, that needs to be redarken again. And also by Discovery School, that needs to be darkened up. It's getting very light. Over by Westwood Stone Hill Apartment, again, same thing, needs to be darkened up. And over by Casey's needs to be darkened up. And over by Rakosa needs to be darkened up. I know, don't we do this every year in October to, as the winter season progresses? Because yeah, again, it's very dangerous to have the crosswalk, you know, to let the cars know that we have the right of way as a pedestrian. And my other words of wisdom is, I want to thank the Wade Park Police Department for what they've done. Over by the Truck Department, you guys have done it. Great job. There is no more trucks that are parking on the street. So I thank you, Chief, for doing what you had to do. And again, it was an honor. And then also, one other final thing, over by the Bus Shelter by Northern Tools, there is still them trees that need to be taken a look at. Half of it is still dead. And the other half is now where the rain has come through, has lightened up. So that's over by the Northern Two, over by the Bus Shelter. Them are my concerns. Thank you for your time, council and police chief.
All right, thanks, Gary. Anyone else for public input? Anyone else? All right, review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approved two AM liquor license for Silver Leaf development. And item B, approved Flaherty and Hood Legislative Proposal.
Move to approve.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Regular agenda, item A, consider twenty twenty-two rural tax rates.
What you have before you, if you recall, that when we have done annexations over the past, we have continued to keep those residents in that area on their rural tax rate, and then it has increased at the same percentage as our tax rate. I believe we now have, I think there's three different, one, two, three, four, excuse me, four different tax codes based off of those annexations. Last year, if you recall, we did not do that with COVID. We chose not to. So the increase that's proposed for now is the increase that they should have received last year. And it does require that you approve this before, at the same time before the preliminary levy is set.
I'll move to approve the twenty twenty-two rural tax rates.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Item B, consider approving fund transfers.
So this again is part of our tax abatement bonds that we do every year, and that that's an amount that we have to transfer from our local sales tax into the tax abatement bond fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Consider twenty twenty-two general fund preliminary budget, preliminary levy, and revised levy. I guess there's one thing I need to read before we probably do them, but the city council will hold a public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-two proposed budget and tax levy on Monday, December sixth, twenty twenty-one, not twenty twenty-two, but at six forty-five PM at Wade Park City Hall. So, all right.
So yes, what you have before you, and as you're aware, every, before September thirtieth of every year, we do our preliminary levy and our proposed budget. And so those documents are attached here for you. The proposed budget for this year is eleven million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So that's the first item that's on there for you for consideration.
Yeah, let's do them one at a time. Need a motion to approve the resolution adopting the preliminary twenty twenty-two general fund budget.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. I say this every year, and I'm gonna say it again. Remember, this is a preliminary budget. We can start high. We cannot go any higher than that, but we can reduce. I would ask anybody out there, please, tell me how to cut taxes in the city of Wade Park without cutting services. We look for that every year, and to be honest with you, nobody ever shows up to tell us how to do it in a realistic way. So again, this is a preliminary budget. It's gonna look bad. They always do. We'll do some cutting yet and make them better. So, all right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously.
Oh, I
Property tax.
Yeah, sorry, I got too many dual roles here, sorry. The next one is the adoption of the, what's called the revised, wait, let me see, that's, I've got too far ahead of me. So we have a property tax levy, which does include the tax abatement bonds in that. So that's why we have a revised and a, so we have to do two motions for this. So this one includes the property tax levy with the tax abatement bonds. The property tax levy proposed for this is nine point, it's nine million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ten.
Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. And then there's the revised preliminary twenty twenty-two.
So the revised one takes out the tax abatement bond amount that we approved in our original resolution. It's more of a formality. So our true proposed tax levy for twenty twenty-two is nine point, well, let me think, nine million, one hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and forty-two, which is just over a six percent increase in the levy from last year.
This is one number I didn't agree with. I think we could have easily dropped it a point before we got to this level, but.
I can tell you, I did have Keith do a calculation, because I know this is a question that gets asked, and it's related to, well, how's it gonna affect a normal homeowner with, you know, we always use a hundred and fifty thousand dollar valuation, assuming nothing else changes, meaning you don't have an increase in your property valuations or nothing else is increasing. It's about a seventy dollar a year increase.
On five points?
On the, what's proposed for this, yes.
Again, this is as high as we can go, so.
Motion to approve.
I'll second, so we can talk about it. Yeah, you know, Rick brings up a good point. Every year, we're looking for advice as to what needs to get done, if you want anything done. We have chosen, I think in the last eight, about six out of the last eight years, not to raise the levy, which we've done a pretty good job of holding. But this year, you know, things keep happening, you know? Garbage goes up. We need new vehicles for the city. We need new people. We need employees. So we need help of what needs to get cut. So please, on the sixth of December, come to the meeting. That's all we can ask. Otherwise, we have to do the best we can do with what we have for information, so. We need help.
Further discussion.
Who was the second?
Mike.
Vic made the motion.
Okay, sorry. I missed that part. Thank you.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Yes.
Four to one. All right, thank you. Item D, amend conditional use permit, rezoning Martin Marietta. I think we throw anybody from Iowa out of the room. He's taking a nap even. He's not even listening.
Yeah, I'll go first. You can jump in if you want. Council members, this request is from Martin Marietta and Cayman Development as part of the land they own. It's a two-part request. First would be rezoning twenty-six acres of their property, which is currently zoned R1 to I1 Light Industrial, so it can be more appropriately included. It's part of the approved mining area. We actually approved the conditional use permit, an amendment to the conditional use permit back in twenty nineteen to move that property into the approved area. I'm supportive of that rezoning. I don't believe it detracts from the surrounding area. It's in line with the area. With the comprehensive plan update, we'll look at, you know, different uses for areas of the south. So I don't think this detracts from anything. As far as the amendments to the conditional use permit, this would increase the approved mining footprint of Rainbow Quarry to, from fifty-two point two-five to ninety-five acres. No proposed increase in the production or sales volume, but would allow access to additional granite reserves and extend the life of the operation. The reason this wasn't done at the same time in twenty nineteen was kind of sequential. On a project like this, it takes time. This was the ultimate goal, but in the interim, they wanted to do the environmental impact statement voluntarily because of some of the land on that side that they would be proposing to impact. And that was concluded not too long ago when the council accepted the findings of the EIS. All the other existing terms and conditions of the existing Rainbow Quarry conditional use permit shall continue to apply. The buildings that are on the southern end would stay only utilized for storage. The applicants noted that they would be open to potential sale of those couple of buildings, but a buyer would be responsible for getting them offsite. Planning Commission reviewed and recommended approval at September thirteenth. No major issues or concerns brought up from attendance, and we did have a couple of folks from the nearby properties in attendance. So I would recommend, this is a two-part request again, so I'd recommend approval of both of the rezoning. I'd recommend doing the rezoning action first, and then approval of the amendment to conditional use permit with the two conditions as recommended. I would add, you know, we see some mining requests treated as interim use permits. That's what we've been doing for some time. But Martin Marietta exists under an older conditional use permit process, so that's where we draw the distinction. That's why if folks are interested to hear this referred to as a conditional use and not an interim.
All right, council, any questions on the first one? To approve or deny the rezoning of approximately twenty-six acres from R1 to single family to I1 Light Industrial?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion.
Quick question is, how long before you would get into this area? I guess my concern is, right across the road there was a County Road one thirty-seven. There is a residential area proposed over there, and it's getting pretty close to residential area. What are you going to do to protect the residential area from the future blasting and so on and so forth going on?
Sure. Neil Grant, Martin Marietta Materials, I'm the Natural Resources Director. And so two years ago, when we added this property to the conditional use permit, we got approval to shift the existing mining footprint westerly to the property line that's between Meridian Aggregates and Cayman Development, which is the entity that we acquired the property under. We are mining westerly now incrementally. And so it isn't, we're not gonna open up this entire area immediately. It'll just be slowly. Over time, we'll be working kind of west and south westerly into this area. And as it relates to the surrounding development, whether it's residential or any other development, I mean, that's something that we've been going through, this environmental impact statement process for the last two years. This is really kind of the culmination of that process. So, you know, the impacts that were identified can be mitigated. Again, the quarry has been here, North Quarry has been here long before all the growth and development that's around it today. And we've been able to peacefully coexist. And so we don't really think that there's, we don't anticipate any issues with adjoining land uses in the future. It's going to be just simply more of what we've been doing for the past, well, we've been there since the mid nineties. I think the quarry started in the forties. I mean, in late eighteen hundreds, smaller, little dimensional stone pits, but in terms of a commercial operation, I think it was in the forties or fifties. So yeah, this will add about twenty years to the life of the operation. So all the processing, all of the sales will continue in their existing location. We're merely permitting additional reserves, so that'll be taken out of the ground, processed, and sold from the north operation on Division Street.
All right, council, any other questions?
Yeah. When you said incrementally, that also means the overburden, right? So you won't see in the next year or two, all the overburden stripped off. It'll be incrementally.
Also slowly and incrementally.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll be building, we've got some nice, well-vegetated berms, well landscape to try to, you know.
Minimize them.
Yeah, we're going to do some things like that similarly on the southwest side along one hundred and thirty-seventh. There are a number of areas that are already heavily vegetated, and we don't want to go in and remove all of that vegetation
Yeah, strip it all.
just to put a berm. So we'll leave the areas that are well buffered already, but down by the old Anderson buildings, there's a clearing, and so that's where we'll be building some berms to try to help buffer the operation from the public road and surrounding development.
Perfect.
Anything else, council? I have a motion. Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Roll and rank.
Mayor Miller, I'd recommend this be two actions, one for rezoning, one for
Yep, forgot to do that one yet. I just wanted to do one at a time.
Sorry, just wanted to be sure.
Yep. And then I have a second one, to move to approve or deny the amendment to the conditional use permit within the following conditions, and I don't think there were any.
Move to approve the amendment.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. You got them, boys. Thank you.
All right.
Item E, preliminary and final plat, Sock River Park Edition Plat Four.
Council members, this request is submitted by New Properties LLC with permission of Mark and Dave Trout. This property is at the southwest corner of the Roundabout on Twenty-eighth, south of the former Trout Properties, Trout Wells Property. Property is vacant. It's being configured as a straightforward, simple, single lot, single block, ahead of development. It's unplatted, so it's being platted ahead of development, since we can't do anything without plating. Ultimate commercial proposal kind of pending, anticipated to be a line X, truck liner accessories business. Property's not been previously planted, so payment in lieu of parkland dedication will be required. Park Board has recommended a payment in the amount of eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty, based on five percent of unapproved value. I've not seen any plans for the building itself, so at this time at least, it's expected that we would just need standard building permits. It's not a conditional use or anything, as far as we're aware. We have reviewed, well, we have received review and certification from Sturts Colony Highway Department. That'll go along with recording of the plat. No major issues, just their standard requirements for any work in the right-of-way mailboxes, such things as that. Planning Commission reviewed at September thirteenth meeting. No comments were received during public hearing, and they recommended approval. I'd recommend approval with the resolution as attached, with the two conditions as noted.
Counsel, questions? If you want to move to approve or deny?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion.
Going to include the conditions?
Yeah, with the conditions, yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Item F, amend interim use permit, MTL Partners Johnson Materials Incorporated.
Council members, this is an amendment to, again, an interim use permit. This is the five-year project we reviewed back in twenty eighteen, about halfway through its lifecycle now. The request is to amend the conditional use permit, kind of two factors. Number one, to do some quarrying in the right-of-way, take some of the granite out, makes things a little bit more feasible to do things in the future there. That was something that was brought up at the time of the initial request, but they opted not to pursue it. We felt it just kind of makes sense. There's no sense in digging through granite if it can be taken out while they're already mobilized on that point. That's a stretch on the northern side of the property. We did approve a variance at that time to reduce the setback to zero, so somewhat prepped it for this as well. They felt that the time was right. They'd made enough headway in the project to bring that particular element back for consideration. Also includes additionally some additional proposed mining areas, A, C, and D. A and C are within the existing boundaries of the operation, but site D adds a little bit to the footprint. That's what's commonly referred to as the teardrop. It's part of the same parcel, but it's separated by Graniteview Road there. This would open up some options to pull some material out of the teardrop. That has an area of about three acres and approximate yield of about ten thousand cubic yards of overburden, twenty-five thousand cubic yards of granite. There would be concrete barriers and along Graniteview Drive and the applicable burming for the newly quarried areas. We haven't had any major issues or concerns with the site through its operations. We did have one question come up regarding a blast, blasting complaint from a property across Highway fifteen, but the records for that event yielded that they were within bounds, so there's really no correlation we could draw. That's why we, as part of the conditions for that, we have a maintained data on blasting and records and everything, and didn't show anything out of bounds, and we didn't hear about it again. So seemingly some sort of a one-off sort of event. We did have a comment from that same person as part of the, not necessarily the public hearing, as contacted before the Planning Commission meeting, just to advise of their past experience with that, but they weren't necessarily against the request. Planning Commission did review at their September thirteenth meeting and held the associate public hearing. Couple of questions came up with the public, but they, those in attendance were satisfied with the responses, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the request with the conditions as proposed by staff. I would add that this request doesn't change the timeline at all. It's still that five-year approval. And as far as we're aware, the applicants believe they can still wrap things up within that five-year term. So everything is going there pretty well, from our understanding.
Counsel, any questions for John?
So now, we can easily get pipes alongside that road within the road right-of-way when this is complete?
It makes it easier for the city.
Yeah, because that's
That's not our sole reason for
Right.
for approving it, but it's, there is some potential benefit to the city there.
Moves the line, yeah.
Correct.
There is also some distance from this project to the north where the utilities are, so.
Well, yeah, what I mean. Right, yeah.
Do you see any problem with, with the trucks coming out as the cars are coming around that corner by the teardrop? That's kind of a blind intersection going through there.
That what they're proposing, so.
Yeah, this was something that was discussed as a possibility back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when they, when they were proposing it, but they kind of, they basically decided it was best to hold off for a while and see what the actual conditions were like. And now they kind of reached that point where they said, yeah, it makes sense to try and pursue that as long as they're in there.
Oh, I remember the conversation. So, I'll move to approve with the conditions.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item G, consider quotes for east parking lot for the ledge.
Mayor, members of the council, kind of continuing our discussion from last month to grade and put gravel on that kind of east parking lot area. I think John can maybe help me up, there we go, there.
Want me to pull up?
If you can toggle over to mine, I'm on a click share here. While they're doing that, he's going to pull up a couple of maps, but if you remember, some of the discussion was exactly what that pond was going to look like, how that might fit in with, you know, future layouts of a potential public safety facility. And then we've since gotten quotes for the project. So, what John's got up on the screen here is just kind of the general layout. I think I shared with you this last month, other than we shifted the entrance up to line up right with Fourteenth Avenue. Had to move a hydrant and a light pole to do that, but kind of felt like it made more sense, especially where we're putting the pond. You see, I've shown in parking stalls, obviously on a gravel parking lot, that's not really the case, and probably not quite as efficient as the number that I counted out here, but now if you can go to the next page, John.
Sorry.
Can you toggle to the next page for me, please? This kind of gives you the big picture, the grading plan, everything's going to drain, you know, to the northeast and the pond that you see there, just to give you kind of a scale of that, kind of as was briefly discussed last month, we put that pond tucked into that north, or, yeah, kind of northwest corner of what would be the future public safety facility. And now, the next page, I think, will show some of the concepts, John, from the public. This one's the pond detail, you could probably move past this. That's it, it's just zoomed in a little bit too much. There we go. So, this is, there, there was a couple, two different versions, but this is obviously what we looked at last January, two different versions of a potential future layout. And as you'll see, the pond that we're showing here in the, in that corner doesn't jive with this layout. Obviously, this would need to change to adapt to that. What we had assumed in this case is that the pond would be kind of on the other side of Fourteenth Avenue. But nonetheless, I think there's the footprint to shift that around, we just have to, to relook at that layout of the future public safety facility. The other thing of note is the pond shown here is sized just for this project, but the outlet piping is sized with extra capacity, thinking that if and when that public safety facility moves forward, we could expand it and use it as one larger pond for, for both projects, if you will. All the way to the very last page here, yeah, nope, that one up, sorry. This is the summary, like I said, we did solicit quotes, we received two quotes, one from CNL Excavating, that was at roughly seventy-one thousand dollars, and another one from Landware. The low, the low quote was from CNL, which was very close to the engineer's estimate. In this summary table, what the top is showing is, if you remember, we, we did the quotes with a base bid, assuming that the city would source the materials and have the material truck to the site, and the contractor would just have to essentially spread and compact it, so that was the base bid. In the event that that didn't work out, we asked the contractor to give us an alternate pricing to supply the material directly. And what you see in that top chart is it's about a twenty-eight thousand dollar savings by doing the sourcing the material and trucking the material directly. So, Bill had a great idea and did some legwork in, in making that happen. And then the, the bottom chart there is just showing the low bid from CNL, plus the material price, plus the hauling price, gives you a total project cost of two-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. So, with that, maybe Bill's got something to add, otherwise he'd answer any questions.
Yeah, I believe the, the numbers, I'm really happy with where we ended up with the total project cost. I do want to take a moment here to thank Mark Marietta for, for working with me on the materials price and rock on trucking, to do the trucking, so if the council does move forward with this, I just want to make sure they get an acknowledgement for what they put to the table.
Now, there was, there was two plans here, what we're going to grade is going to have, how many cars in it? Because one I saw eight hundred, one I saw eleven hundred.
Well, that was on my chart, where I drafted it up like it's a paved.
Yeah, I understand that, but how many acres do we need? Because I don't want to grade this and, and chip ourselves out of a hundred square feet, because now, next year, we got to go back out and ask Martin Marietta to do this again, and somebody else to do it again, and to grade it again, and for heaven's sake, pay an engineering fee again.
That's for sure.
My, my estimate, you know, assuming kind of an eighty percent, you know, efficiency ratio, was a little over eight-hundred-and-fifty parking stalls, you know, pavement to gravel, you're going to lose some efficiency there.
Right, and this lot is a lot better than what we had that we used this year, and I think that we figured about eight hundred also cars, and I think we could pack more in there. So, John's right, you draw lines on a piece of paper and it looks good, it's not paved and striped and you're. We'll be working with best crowd to maximize that site to get more, so I think we're going to even get more out there, once he gets his fingers in there.
If we're going to do eight acres, or seven-point-nine, or whatever we're going to do with this, if, if we, if we need to do nine, let's do nine. I mean, if we have enough parking behind it and this, that's fine, I mean, I don't want to cut ourselves short, so we got something coming in and all of a sudden we say, oh, we're two hundred cars short someplace.
I don't believe so with the south parking lot, and we're going to be coming back and letting the council know exactly where we're at with that, so that we can utilize that, I think we're going to be in a, in a good position.
All right.
Where is the funding going to come from, yes? That comes, and they can do that this year yet?
That's the intention, it's in for review with the Sock River Watershed District, permit now for that ponding. Anticipate that gets turned around quickly and CNL's ready to do it this.
Okay. Any other questions, council?
Motion.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, thanks. Item H, consider four-way stop at Second Street and Sixth Avenue North. Just because some lady in this building got in an accident there, now all of a sudden we're spending money. We're spending money for a stop, sorry.
I was hit there too, a few years ago.
Were you?
Yeah. I don't know how many years ago, but Arlen Schimmanhorn responded to the call. Yeah, same situation, she thought I had a stop, I went through.
I don't know that, I guess, chief, I'd have to ask you, I don't know how many accidents we have there or whatever, but I looked at it today as I was walking the mutt along, you know, the dog, and it's a long stretch and people do, you know, in that kind of timeframe, you, all of a sudden, you're going forty-five or, or better, so.
Yes, and I, I can attest that Shawna had nothing to do with petitioning for this, or she tried to stay very neutral on it.
I did.
But, just real briefly, staff has discussed the possibility of making this a four-way stop. And quite honestly, we haven't had time to do a lot of research on, on the, in other words, we haven't done a traffic study on the streets or, or whatever. So, the recommendation is somewhat anecdotal or subjective, but I believe it's still reasonable and valid. I have received a lot of complaints about vehicle speeding on Second Street North. It seems to be a major flow over to crossroads from Tenth. And I, and we have had some traffic crashes there, at, particularly at Second and Sixth. We've had complaints, or I've had complaints of vehicles literally passing other vehicles on that roadway. And given the fact that there is a school not too far from that intersection, kids waiting for the bus stop to, to get dropped off or picked up from school, given just the circumstances, and there is no stop sign between, as, as the mayor pointed out, from Tenth Avenue North to Second Avenue North, there is no stop sign for traffic east-west on Second Street North. So, speeds do get up there, and, and thus, that is the reason for the recommendation for the four-way stop at Second and Sixth Avenue North.
You have something?
Yeah, I would like to add too, if the council does move forward with this, I, I can't tell you how soon we're going to get it up, but I want to do it right, and then I think we should do, I'd like to do something with the news media to let them know that it's going up, there'll be advance notice signs. We'll, we'll mark it up as best we possibly can to let them know what's happening, so that may take a little bit.
Are there already crosswalks painted in there?
I think.
I don't believe there's, no, there are not crosswalks currently.
If there isn't, then we'll have to put some in there then, yeah, but, just so, just, yeah, it might not happen in the next week or so, but we'll get a PR.
The, the stop sign that's down on First Street and Sixth Avenue has got the, the red reflective tape on, I think that would help if we.
Yeah, I'll come up with ways to.
It's just something more to see.
Yeah.
But.
You're going to have to put some yellow flashers up for a while.
They put flags usually.
We'll come up with, it'll be, that's going to be a, everybody's used to driving, and, oh, here's a, what's this? Yep, we'll do it right, so.
All right, any other questions, council? Your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passed unanimously. Item I, consider extension of facility lease agreement with Centra Care Health Systems.
So, Centra Care has been utilizing our former Public Works facility at six-oh-two Third Street South. They've used that for COVID testing, and I'm not sure if vaccinations are going on there.
I don't think they're vaccinating there.
So, their lease that they had with us was for, for the end of this year.
End of October.
End of October, thank you. So, they are requesting to renew that lease for an ex, an additional year. And so, it's before you with the same provisions that it had in the previous agreement. And we've had some discussions with staff, I think we're all in favor and supportive of moving forward.
But they're sure busy over there.
Mm-hmm, it's been a great reuse of that facility.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. And item J, consider participation in the state human trafficking grant.
Mayor, briefly, there is a window of opportunity here for Wade Park to consider participating in a state human trafficking grant. As you probably recall in years past, we have had an investigator signed to this task force, but do not currently. The Central Minnesota Human Trafficking Task Force has been doing a lot of good work in the fight against human trafficking, sex trafficking, and there's interest in expanding the investigative rank from two to three, which would, could potentially allow Wade Park to rejoin that, that task force. Basically, what I'm asking is the permission to participate in the grant application. The grant itself is being written by the Stearns County Attorney's Office, and that grant needs to be submitted by October twenty-seventh. So, it's, it's a kind of a short window of time. But, this, participation in the grant, what we'd be asking for is the, the funding for a, a police officer position, full salary and benefits for two years. So, it'd be, it'd be contingent on a couple of things, one, that hundred percent funding, as well as, two, our ability to be able to find a qualified person to assign to that unit. So, because of the short time window, when these grants open and when they close so quickly, we're, we're under a little bit of a time crunch to seek approval to participate in the grant process. If we're successful, if the grant is approved, and there's no guarantee that it will, or if they were to say, well, we'll fund half, we likely would not be interested in that, in that scenario. But e, either case, if we are successful in getting additional funding, the ability to hire would be brought back to the council for consideration at a later date.
So, listening to you talk is that you're going to take one of your patrolmen out, put them in an investigator?
This would, this would, this would, if, if successful, if the funding is there and it, it, it would ultimately be approved, it would be basically hiring a twenty-second police officer. Right now, with the cops grant that would, in recent work that we've been doing, we are at twenty-one. This would grow our department to twenty-two, so we would hire somebody, and then that would free up a body to be assigned, or a person to be assigned, a more veteran person to be assigned to the task force.
Any questions?
I think we had a kind of a discussion about some of these grants, is after that two years, it could be.
Hundred percent grant has disappeared, and it could be on us, you know.
It, it could be, and I, I, there is a, but I will say that this is the, what we're asking for now is, is, if things stay the same with, and we're not involved, this would be years five and six. So, the, the grant has been renewed two previous times, the first time we were involved, and the second time we had to back out because of staffing issues. So, there is a, a, again, I agree, no guarantee, but there is a history of this grant being renewed, and I don't know that, and I'm fairly confident that that would be the case, even beyond the two years.
So, with that, Dave, does that mean then that if it was renewed, that the benefits and the salary would be completely paid for at a hundred percent?
Correct, that's what we would seek, and, and if we are not successful in getting full funding, I, I would not bring a proposal to hire anybody forward. It's only if we're successful in getting the additional funding from the state. It's a competitive process, there's no guarantee of that, they could choose to fund other task forces around the state, in which case, they could tell us, sorry, we're, we're, we're reallocating, allocating elsewhere. So, it's just, it gives us the ability to, to participate in the grant process and, and to keep our options open and just see what happens through that grant process. But there is interest among the other partners in this grant, that includes the Stearns County Sheriff's Office, Stearns County Attorney, St. Cloud Police Department, to, to see us involved again investigatively.
Council, any other questions? Motion to move or approve, to approve or deny participating in the state of Minnesota human trafficking grant application?
I'm going to make a motion to approve, and then I'll add in discussion.
Okay.
Second.
Now, further discussion.
Because I'll, I'll just ask Mike the same question that Rick would always ask, and do you think you'd hire that twenty-second officer in twenty-twenty-three anyway? So, you know, when money's available, yeah, it binds maybe future budgets or councils, but if we're successful?
It's something you'd never know.
Never know.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, approve bills.
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. I do have two correspondents, one from St. Cloud Area School District seven forty-two, thanking us for the twenty-five hundred dollars for the community ed program at Coreyview Education Center, and one from Anna Marie's Alliance for the fifteen hundred dollar gift that helps provide safe shelter for two-hundred-and-thirty-nine women and one-hundred-and-eighty-nine children. And one from Anna Marie's Alliance for the fifteen hundred dollar gift that helps provide safe shelter for two hundred and thirty-nine women and a hundred and eighty-nine children. I think that's all I have, Sean, do you have anything?
I do not.
John?
Council meeting.
John?
Oh, I could say that.
No, sir.
Chief? Okay, Bill, go ahead.
You just had to do it, didn't you?
I had to do it.
Just a quick brief update for the council and, and all the citizens that are listening out there, the drought warning still is in effect, I get an update from D N R every Monday. Wade Park is still in the severe drought, drought warning phase, so we're still trying to keep our target under fifty percent of our, fifty percent plus our January, and we are meeting that. For the last twenty-four days, we've met it, so we're doing good there, although the concern is, and I still want to, I'm recommending to keep it on again. Is our aquifer is slowly, slowly still dropping a little bit, and it's not real stable, so. Until I know that I can see that moving back up again, I want to, and it's not really hurting anybody, there's a few people that call in, and we give an exception for new grass or fertilizing or something like that, so. At this point, it's probably going to stay on until, till snow flies, so, and then we'll see what happens over the winter, that's all, thank you.
All right, thanks, Bill, Carla? All right, we are, anybody else?
Just the next council meeting is scheduled October eighteenth, at this particular point, there's no need to have a meeting on Monday.
All right, and we are adjourned at seven twenty-one.